So I think we'll open the zoning board meeting of June 12th, 2019. We have a form here. The first item on discussion is North Brown LLC North Village update. Good afternoon.
Good evening. Richard, can I sit? Will, you're not going to sit here?
No.
Good evening. I typically represent North Brown. Just want to provide an update and address a couple of issues. In terms of the cistern, it's been, the piping has been installed. We're just waiting to paint it. There's a little delay in terms of getting the pipes because the stamping specs were special for, they were unique. So, but we have it, we fabricated it onsite and are now painting it. So it should be ready for testing very soon. I provided the board with an update of our construction schedule and sales schedule, which also includes the Phase Two, the buildings that we have under construction and the ones that we have under agreement. So, you know, in terms of the schedule, it was our understanding that the board was asking for that schedule so that they could get a heads up in terms of what was coming up, in terms of sales and whatnot. So any issues could be addressed. So we're a little surprised when we got a letter from Bill on the 29th saying that he wouldn't issue any occupancy permits for the final three units until we perform certain work, including the construction of the sidewalk. We were surprised because we thought we had an understanding that the sidewalk construction would happen after we finished the construction of that side of Phase One, since we would have basically destroyed the sidewalk otherwise during construction. So nevertheless, we've tried to address Bill's concerns and think we have it. Unfortunately, the closing that we had scheduled for the 31st, we found out that we couldn't do it. So then we needed to, we had paving scheduled for the 4th. The paving for Phase Two went forward and the paving for the apron for the cistern or the drive for the cistern was done. There was a question about the testing on the sidewalk. So the paving couldn't happen on the 4th.
Be underway, kind of thing.
Yeah, it passed and then, but then the parameters got changed and it didn't pass. And then we had it retested and it passed.
How did the parameters change? Because you're looking frustrated, Ed.
Yeah, yeah, well, I am. But I don't know. That's beyond my pay grade.
Oh.
I don't know. That's engineering. But in any event, so the rescheduling of the paving is now tomorrow. Hopefully, it's not going to rain because that will delay us. The problem is we have unit owners who thought they were closing on the 30th and who are meeting and don't have a place to go. So we've been trying to work on something that we could get them in. But I guess it's something that the board needs to consider. So I think that's the biggest issue that we have at this point.
The southern sidewalk issue?
Well, the occupancy issue.
Well, occupancy, because of sidewalk issue. So I guess what we'll do is hear from our, I think our engineer. Have a good explanation, maybe.
Sure.
What's going on.
We had ongoing discussion about the sidewalk and, you know, early on, the way the decision reads is that the sidewalks must be constructed prior to occupancy issuance, okay? And I don't issue occupancies. The building inspector issues occupancies. I sign off on the work being completed. So we've worked with the applicant to the extent possible and have allowed continually and repeatedly, in the order of 22 occupancy permits, without the sidewalks being constructed.
Right.
And so here we have-
And that reason is because, obviously, they are ongoing rather than doing piecemeal.
I do agree with the premise that the sidewalk could get damaged during construction.
Yeah.
And so when the population of the residents becomes to the point where they're walking in a narrow road and there's construction traffic driving to the next phase past them, that's when it becomes a concern and I did raise that. So the applicant came in with a request on a Monday afternoon. I was out there Tuesday, did an inspection. And that's when I raised the question on the condition of the sidewalk.
How was the one?
I saw the construction traffic, which was significant. I saw a family with a toddler walking at the end of Phase One. And at that point, I made the determination that it's the point in time we need sidewalks. The sidewalks were all prepped and ready to go. And we did have an understanding that they were going to be installed last August. That date came and went.
I got a letter here, something about October. Or is that a different?
No, August.
Okay.
And I continued to sign off on occupancies as they came in and worked with the applicant. And here we are, six months later, and the sidewalks were still not done. So we have to make an issue with this. And just for everyone's benefit, we don't have cash surety in this case. The surety that the town has that these things are going to get done are the occupancy permits and the building permits. It's a 40B project and that's the mechanism that we have for sure. So I want to make sure everyone understands that, you know, that's pretty much the hammer that we have to make sure things are getting done and moving along. Sidewalks were not the only issue. There was also landscaping that was not done. And, you know, when you have 90% of the residents in that phase, you should be 90% done with the construction. So, to make a long story short, we made that, I made that determination. As is allowed by the Conformment. And it wasn't punitive. It was in an effort to get things done. Now, the sidewalk, to answer Ed's question on the engineering, the sidewalk as constructed did not pass the compaction test. So therefore, they had to rework it. We had to send the lab back out to retest it. They did. It passed the second round. It's prepped and, you know, assuming they can pave tomorrow and it passes the testing for installation, then I'll have no issue signing off on the occupancy. But that's where it is. I think a lot of this consternation can be avoided if we, and I spoke with Neil about this, if we could get some detailed schedule submitted in a critical path format. And I gave you some samples in your packet between what's been provided versus what I think needs to be provided. Where we intermix the requests for building permits and occupancy permits with the construction schedule so we can take a look at what's, and agree on. So we're not at the 11th hour coming in on a Monday expecting action by Wednesday. You know, creates a stressful environment. So we can anticipate things well in advance of the problem and we can resolve it so that we all agree. And I think that's the goal.
I mean, it seems to me that you onsite, when you did your inspection, you figured there was a safety issue, you know, with the construction traffic.
In my opinion, there was a clear safety issue.
Any thoughts?
Well, we, in terms of the safety issue, we proposed to Bill and we've since constructed a construction access that will go around Phase One.
Oh.
So as you come in, the Boulevard entrance, you go straight and up and around-
I thought you saw something going on.
Rather than through Phase One. And so that will cut down on the construction traffic.
I think that's a great solution and I wholeheartedly agree with that.
So that's, so that's what we did to address that. You know, without getting into, you know, who said what, when, the issue that we have is just the notification just before the closing. I mean, it wasn't, the closing had been scheduled for months and months. We'd been showing it on our schedule since January that this unit was going to close on the 31st. And so if it was going to be an issue, then, you know, prior notification would have helped. As it is, again, we have a unit, we have unit owners that have no place to go and, you know.
That's tough. That's causing consternation.
And it causes problems for us.
And I understand that, Ed, but you know-
And I, you know, and we'd be perfectly happy to sit down with Bill and with Leonard and with Mark, whoever wants to do it, and work out a procedure that works better in terms of knowing what it is that's going to be required and when and who needs to sign off on it. Because that's one of the problems we're dealing with. We're not only dealing with Mark as the building inspector, we're dealing with foreleaves as the building inspect, they actually do the inspections. They report to Mark. And then Mark, I guess, reports or coordinates with Bill in terms of the sign off. I'm not sure, we're still not sure who signs off first, whether it's Bill or Mark. So we'd like to see a process that's a little more defined in terms of what we have to do.
Sounds like that's what we're looking for, too.
Yeah.
You know?
So we're going to do it.
But to be fair, the sidewalk issue had, it was anticipated that that was going to be done again.
Well, no, I have, well, I have an email from Bill last November that says that it'll be, you know, that it'll be done at the end of Phase One. And he's agreeing with that. So that was the understanding that we had. And we had, but even before this came up, we had, the sidewalk had been prepped for the paving. We were ready to do it. We just didn't know that it was going to hold up permits.
It's quite a few months after.
Not really. We're just, we're selling, I mean, we're completing construction because we're selling the unit on that side. We've got two units on that side we have to sell.
Let me just read this out. This morning, Ida, from Bill to Tim Barlow and Neil. Neil, this morning, I received a press request for review from the Building Department regarding your request for an occupancy permit for the above referenced property. I'm authorizing this occupancy permit but require you to include on your GANT schedule sidewalks and vertical granite curb installation. Both of these items are to have been installed prior to issuance of occupancy permits. In regard to sidewalks, I have agreed that sidewalk construction can be completed near the end of the site work in that phase. However, vertical grade curb has been postponed repeatedly and there's no reason for this not to have been installed as of yet. Let me know if you have any questions. Bill, well.
And the vertical curb was installed, so.
Here's the GANT chart.
So just to reiterate that, there's three units left in Phase One and we are near the end. And that's consistent with the email.
Sure. So it's the interpretation of the thought process. You know, the fact that the town has no surety is a huge issue for the town and therefore the engineer who's looking out for the best interest of the town, so.
Can I say something?
Would you like to tell us your name?
Tim Barlow.
And who you are and what you do.
Contractor for North Brown.
We don't need your pig.
The GANT chart that's referred to in that email, there's a recent one that went out at the beginning of May. And these are sent to Bill monthly to give an update on what we are doing within the project.
Okay, is that the large overview that he was talking about?
Well, this is one of them.
I did include a copy of that particular one that Tim's referring to in the packet.
And you can see on the GANT chart for the beginning of May that we are including sidewalk prep. So all I am asking is that, I believe, I made Bill aware that we were still working on the sidewalk and he knew we had an occupancy coming up. Just let me know, you're not going to issue the occupancy until the sidewalk's completed. I think I had given fair notice and I would just like the same in return.
Is there a date on this? Miss, Miss Sitch, email?
So again, you know, I think a meeting with the parties would probably resolve it before your next meeting. But in the meantime, I'd like to get the occupancy for Unit 60 because I don't want to-
So you're asking the board to do anything?
If you could, I would. I mean, again, my concern is that if we ever, if we ever rain tomorrow, the paving is going to get pushed off. And if the paving gets pushed off, it's going to get pushed off to next week. And then it's part-time building inspector, so we've got to catch him when he's in. So, you know, it's going to be another week before these people can move in. And I'm just, we would like to do what we can to accommodate them. And that's the concern.
I've got a couple of things I'd like to have your friend first.
I just want to add, in your packet that I distributed, three samples of charts, two of them were submitted. One was the May one, one was more recent that Neil submitted. The third page is an example of what I'm looking to get. You'll see within that chart, there's a series of arrows. And what that is, is it's called a critical path, meaning those tasks must be removed prior to the subsequent tasks being performed. It's a logical approach to the project. So one of those things starts to slip. It's a cascade effect and all the things connected to that slip. This needs to, in my opinion, be employed here on this project because there's a lot of moving parts. They're breaking phases into sub-phases. It's becoming a little more complicated. A GANT chart that Neil submits is great, but it doesn't give me the detail of when and where they're looking for occupancies. And because this is a 40B and it's not that I have cash surety, you know, everything's, all the surety's linked to building permits and occupancy permits. I really need that intermix of construction and occupancy and building permit requests. So that's my main focus. If we all get on the same page, I think this will be a much smoother process.
We have attorney.
Winner.
Winner, winner.
Really?
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 Okay. Attorney winner. Hand the hands up. I just do this.
Well, I just wanted to comment with your permission. On the last thing that you mentioned, and that was that you were looking for some action from the board. And you hadn't reached that, so I didn't want to be premature. But if you'd like to hear my concern, the reason why I raised my hand, I'll continue.
I would like to.
And it's just that there's nothing before the board at this point to act on. It's just a procedural issue that I wanted to raise. I'm sure you're aware of the terms of the Conformment. It's paragraph 40. It talks about how occupancy permits are sought and obtained. And there's a procedure for doing that. And it happens on staff level. I mean, it's a two-pronged approach. It goes to the engineer. Engineer signs off, so Bill looks at it. And there's certain stipulations that have to be met about, you know, compliance with infrastructure to reach and service a building. And then it goes to the building inspector to sign off. So that's the staff level process that occurs. And tonight's agenda just has review. So I just wanted to sort of note that before we pressed forward. Because of course, there is a procedural vehicle to bring something before the board, but we're not there at that stage yet.
True.
Again, it was, what drives this is the scheduling of the pavement. And we were, once it got delayed from the 4th, we're up to the 13th. And that's the issue that we have, so.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I'm curious. Has all the inspections been done other than the sidewalk?
Yes, on the building and the unit.
As far as this occupancy?
Yeah.
So you're already up to that point? So it's just a matter of putting in the sidewalk?
Right.
Getting-
Well, I, I'm assuming that that's all that's required.
All right. So we'll assume that that's what's needed is the sidewalk to be signed off on. Can I ask Bill a question?
Yes, sure.
What's the inspection process for the sidewalk after it's finished?
We have a testing company do compaction tests to make sure that it's compacted properly. We have the mixed design that was submitted, so we have the asphalt composition. And we also have Leonard overseeing to make sure that the methodology that they're employing is accurate. So when I hear back from Leonard and JTC, the testing company?
And they come out on the day of the paving?
They do.
So that's a relatively quick process?
It's in the field when it's done.
So it sounds like as soon as you get paved, whether it's Friday, Monday, or whatever, tomorrow's going to rain. I don't want to break you out of the, but.
Well, we're scheduled earlier, so we're hoping that there won't be delay. So.
But it sounds, it sounds like you're almost there. Just a matter of getting the paving done, which I think it'll be a Friday.
Can we work on getting that, getting that heads up to the engineer and stuff and everybody so that, again, so that we're looking at that?
Well, we really, Pam, we really have. I mean, we, Neil sent a notice-
Well, you're talking about a problem that obviously got missed. And I just, I hate to have that left to you guys.
Well, again, we need to know what's expected of us for the issuance of occupancy permits. So if it's, if it's, you know, again, we had an understanding that it would be done at the end of Phase One and that's what we're going on and that's how we schedule. Now, if it was going to be moved up and it was going to be contingent upon, you know, and the occupancy permit was going to be contingent upon this work being done, then we would have liked the heads up a little ahead of time so that we could have had, made sure that the testing got completed in time and the paving happened as projected. That's our point. So it's kind of a two-way street. We need, we need to know.
I'm sorry that you've been delayed, Ed.
It's, excuse me again, Pam. It'd be nice if we could get in writing from Bill that inspection requirements and what it is exactly he's looking for. The GANT chart itself was requested by Bill and that's what we've been providing. And now he wants a new-
The town's been accommodating you.
Now he wants a new chart. And I'm willing, no problem, to do it. But I would like something that isn't a moving target.
Can you stop by and sit down and work it out?
I'd like to have a meeting, yeah, with Bill and Mark and parties involved and come up with something that's written that has milestones on it that I can refer to instead of just verbal.
And we had done that on the 30th, the day after we got the letter and had a meeting. And we thought we had an understanding in terms of the issuance of the occupancy and then it didn't happen. So, all right, well, that's, if that's the board's decision, then that's where we are.
Well, I think, I think the attorney mentioned that, you know, really, it was a review. We didn't realize that there was an issue with your permit, you know, your occupancy permit. Should have been, I mean, it should, we should go through a process that the town has. And then if there's a problem, then come before the board with a, with an understanding so that we know what's happening.
Just on air as a discussion?
Yeah. Okey-dokey.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, oh, not too far off, is a public hearing for Pelu Inc., 520 Northwest Main Street. And it was advertised. And the Town of Douglas says, saying, Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 7:15 on Wednesday, June 12th, 2019 in the Douglas Municipal Center Community Meeting Room, 2090 Post Street, Douglas Ness. To hear the following application. 7:15 PM, public hearing, Pelu Inc. has filed an appeal, National Law Chapter 30A, Section 8, regarding the Building Commissioner's decision dated May 16, 2019, to not issue a building permit to extend a 22-foot wide to 30-feet wide existing structure, parentheses, concession stand. The same applicant also requests, as an alternative form of relief, a variance in a rural agricultural RA zone to district pursuant to the Douglas Zoning bylaws to extend a structure from 22 feet wide to 30 feet wide for an existing concession stand. The property is located at 520 Northwest Main Street, assessment map 147, parcel one. A copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department along during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated. Daniel Heaney, Chairman of the Board of Appeals. This was on the Worcester Gazette, Dollarama Gazette, May 29th and Wednesday, June 5th, issued. And I'm sure it's been on the Board and Board. Hearing the application, everyone is Mike Zepic, Lou Tassino, Sean Holling and myself, Pam Holmes.
I'm Lauren Borget.
Keith Borget.
Hi, Lauren, in here.
Keith.
Keith.
Lauren.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too. So let's discuss the application. I'm going to ask the attorney something because here we are with a variance request. And yeah.
So you haven't asked a question yet, but I'm anticipating what your question is.
Oh, are you? Because I highlighted something.
So this is the order from which they've appealed.
That's correct.
And the appeal, obviously, as a matter of zoning, allows the board to affirm, reverse or modify. So the grounds set forth in the letter are not necessarily operative or controlling. So one of the ways, and I understand that the reason why you filed sort of a hybrid petition is in one sense, the board could take action to affirm, modify or revoke the enforcement order. But in another sense, the board could grant relief, making it moot. So it's an either or, sort of in the alternative kind of application, the way I read it at least. So I know this talks about a non-conforming structure. But what I saw in the packet that was forwarded to me was a variance that gave life to, you know, this use in the site. So I think the application for the variance is proper because in order to change something that came to life by a variance, you need a modification of variance.
I don't believe that came to change by variance.
It was a special permit.
The water slide actually had the variance, but the picnic ground with the concession stand-
All I have was the variance.
That was just for the water slide part of the part. The picnic ground was already existing and the concession stand was already existing with the picnic ground.
So all I have is just the, is it 1983, August 22nd? And it refers to a variance including the minimum dimensional requirements, area set at side yard, et cetera.
That was for the slide.
You're saying that's just for the water slide?
It was, yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to ask the Building Commissioner to give us a little-
Yeah, Mark Kaplan, Building Commissioner. This is the original plot plan for what, what variance, what the used variance covered, this part of the land. Just so you know, and all the other buildings are out here. It doesn't show the other buildings. That's from our archives.
Yeah, it's helpful.
It's all yellow, huh?
Yeah, I do print the colors of the color.
We're not there yet, Louis.
Okay. So that changes my response, of course, because if we're not talking about the, this side of it, which was subject to the variance and talking about continuing non-conforming use, then I suppose the board's options are a little bit different because now they've applied for a variance when maybe that's appropriate relief. But not necessarily. They'd be looking for a finding, a modifier, non-conforming use in that case.
Which is, you know, which is what the Building Commissioner said. So we have, the board said, an application that says they're looking for a variance and they're really looking to-
Right. I mean, again, I'm not going to be your lawyer, so you can make your case as to why you applied and why you did.
What I'd really like is that I appeal, I'm appealing his decision to not issue the permit. If the appeal didn't go through, I was looking for the relief from a variance.
You're using, you're mixing your terms, I think.
I mean, extending or modifying a non-conforming use is typically a finding. So it's a different application, not a variance. You know, applying for a variance is a different animal. It's a much higher standard.
Different, yeah.
It's really a different thing. So that's not to say that they couldn't, you know, seek a variance separately. But really, to change, to modify a non-conforming use, you apply for a finding, which is a different application.
It's a special permit application, right?
The non-conforming use is the same as it was. The use hasn't changed.
No, no.
I'm just letting you know.
When you originally, when you originally- When you originally, when you originally had the concession stand.
Yeah.
That's a non-conforming use.
Right, once zoning came in.
Right.
Right.
Now, to change that, another special permit can, can alter that, to make it more non-conforming, which is what you wanted to do. You wanted to make it larger.
No.
No, you didn't want to make it larger?
No, it's smaller.
What? Oh, uh, okay, so-
That's what I'm debating.
The, the change that you guys made, though, you, you made a 22, you, you made that 22-foot building in the part of another, not, there was another one that was larger, right?
No. This building, the actual footprint of the building, and the part that I changed, was where the, there was a deck and a stairway that was access to the second floor use of the building. That was the only access. So I have pictures here that-
What I'm trying to see is, oh, we have a-
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I, I think before we start handing out pictures and taking evidence, I, I think that the issue is whether or not there's been proper notice given about the type of relief being sought.
And that's, that's what I-
And the nature, I'm sorry, I don't need to cut you off. Please finish your thought, because I think you're about to say what I'm thinking, which is-
Don't worry, please.
Whether or not it's big or small, or it's an alteration.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a different application if it's an alteration. And it's a different standard. So I'm saying this, I think, for the benefit of the applicant, because that's exactly what I was gonna say.
Much easier standard.
The variance standard is, is a much higher standard. And I did notice in the application-
Yep.
-one particular sentence, which said, "There is no unique nature of the site as it pertains to the building." So that's, forgive me, but a non-starter when you're talking about a variance. But the finding for, excuse me, standard for a finding under 486 would be not more detrimental.
Right.
So it, it's, it's a lighter standard than a variance. So that may be what needs to be noticed for the board to move forward on that.
Louis.
I, I'm, I'm getting confused here. Okay, now, I've been going, it's easy to do, but I've been going by this here and that, and anything else. Now, just tell us, tell me, in your own-
Tell the chair, and you can listen.
Yeah, tell the chair. You really didn't do nothing up there. All you did was add to it, or you subtracted from it. But that was, that, what was there? Am I right or wrong?
I subtracted to it, and where there was a deck, and a cement ramp, and space, I just tore that down and added, I didn't add any more length, enclosed it.
Okay, so you never, you never changed the size of the building?
No.
Don't make any, see what I'm saying? He never, I see, that's, that's what I couldn't understand. He never changed the size of the building.
Can I say something on that?
Sure. Sure.
Before we go too much further, are we, what are we doing? Do we have the right application for it?
I, I, well, I'd like to determine that very shortly, very shortly. Please, please-
The footprint increased on the building.
Okay.
We don't go by square foot, we go by footprint, footprint increase.
That's right.
It was a small porch. They went the whole length of the building.
Okay.
So the appeal is proper?
The appeal is proper. We can hear the appeal. However, if you'd like relief from the size, I would highly recommend that you withdraw your variance and fill out a special permit, so that you, so that you can be granted a change to the, you know, increased non-conforming use. And then the, the, the standards for accepting that are much less than a variance. It'll be helpful for you.
My only concern is that we open full-time this coming Saturday.
Yeah, that's a concern.
Yeah, there's no occupancy on that building, right?
And there is no occupancy.
I'm confused here. You gotta explain this to me. The building's there, was there. He added to the building. High, right? You went high.
No, no, we just got, we just got, we just got notice from the building inspector that the, that the footprint has changed.
Your footprint, you say the footprint has changed, right?
Don't argue with the building inspector.
Yeah, well, how many square feet?
Doesn't matter. It's not, it's not square feet.
You don't know how many square feet?
It went from 22 to 30 feet.
But you don't, you don't know what he changed it to? Do you know?
He increased it. No, 'cause I haven't gotten a set of plans, 'cause he didn't pull a permit for it.
Okay, so you've gotta measure it up, and he's gotta give you, you've gotta go there and see the other one that was there, and tell us how many square feet. We don't know, you're telling us.
Okay.
That's building inspector told us something, and it ended up in handcuffs.
I think that's enough. I think that's enough. Ron, can I help you? Can we help you? Can you help yourself?
538 Northwest Main Street. That building I originally built, all right, and it had a different functions in the building, right? Then, when Mark came up and visited it and said that we were, had a problem because we, you know, made it, made it bigger, right? We had come down and talked to the administrator, right, about what the policy would be coming to this board. And he said, "You wanna get relief on, on the increase, and you don't wanna, if the, if the zoning board does not want to go down that route, then you don't wanna pin them in a corner, and that's why you, we combined the variance issue of it."
Okay, I see.
All right?
Yeah.
So, I think this gentleman over here said that that's what we, they wanna go
for, is relief from the original-
Right.
All right? Now, is that where we're at, is, I guess is the question?
The recommendation from the attorney, the town's attorney, and just personally myself, would be, the easiest way, and the more assured way that you're gonna get this granted, would be to go appeal, appeal the decision.
But that's what we were here for in the beginning.
But you're also looking to increase the size, you're looking to get an okay that you increased the size.
Okay, can I ask a question?
And that, I'm telling you, is a special permit. Because a variance, you don't have any, you don't have really much to go on asking for a variance.
Right.
Well, may I just ask a follow-up question, perhaps? You'd be the right one to, to answer it. The, the footprint or any of these alterations, are they going, is it going into a setback? Is it creating any other kind of new dimensional non-conformity?
Well-
It's an alteration of a non-conforming use, so start with that premise.
It goes to the right side of the building. It's, no, the side setback will be fine.
Okay, so there's no, there's nothing to vary. It really is an alteration of an existing non-conforming use, and there's no variance to be granted. Because but for the non-conformity of the use in structure, there isn't a dimensional requirement for you to vary.
May I ask, may I pose a question?
Me, too.
Of course.
At the moment, there's an application for a variance, and there was notice given that a variance was being asked for.
Yeah.
We do not have the ability today, sitting here, to convert that or to allow a special permit. It would require a different application process, correct?
That's all correct.
And in the body of the application that you received for the variance request, you just, it said, "There's nothing about this lot that's special, or in any way, unique or different from any other lot in the area."
In the applicant's own words.
Which would mean that it would, on its face, not meet the requirements for a variance requirement. Okay, I was confused, I just wanted to make sure.
Be a little more diplomatic about that point, but that's the, that's the logical course that I was heading down.
The only-
Again, can I speak?
Sure, go ahead.
The only thing is, is now, after all this time, may I ask Keith a question?
Please.
Uh, maybe, maybe I should ask you. And go from the beginning of this change.
Yeah.
Take it from the beginning of this change, and explain to the chair what you did and the time, when you did it.
Um, I'm not sure whether that's gonna help, Ron.
You're talking about starting in the fall?
Yeah. When you first went to the existing building inspector.
Well, in the fall, I had-
Irrelevance.
In the fall, I had plans of what we were gonna do. And in October, I brought it to the old building inspector in the town, sat down with him for a half hour, he looked over everything, he didn't have a problem with it.
Did you apply for a permit?
I told him I didn't pull the permit at the time. He says, "You're gonna pull it", and I said, "No," because I didn't know who was gonna build it. So I said, "As soon as I find out who's gonna build it..." But he had no problem with it, told me it was fine. Everything was, he agreed with me that I didn't increase, because if you look at the picture, the two decks, because they're a main entryway to the second floor, and the second floor overhang, the second floor came up and overhang square footage, and there was a cement access ramp that was part of the original footprint of the building, that, that was fine. Because on the side of the deck, I wasn't going past that. It was just-
Now, you're getting, now, wait, wait, wait. You're getting, you're getting way beyond what we're talking about.
Okay.
We're not, we can't talk about that, because nobody's been there to see it. Did you ever apply for a building permit?
No.
You told him you were going to, when you knew who the builder was, right?
Right. And when I, when I got plans ready to go-
Yeah.
That he was fired, so I, there was no building inspector.
So you figure you don't need a building permit?
No, I didn't figure, no.
Well, how, how, I don't understand.
Well, I had, that was in January, February, and I had, I mean, when I went down and talked to him, and, and I'm out in plain sight, I'm not trying to hide any-
I understand that. But, but the fact of the matter is, you need to do a building permit.
I understand that. And I, and I said that that was my-
Your faux pas.
Yeah.
Right. So now, we're trying to fix this.
Right.
Problem is, what you've done is, you've, you're upset that you got cited by the building inspector, so you wanna, you wanna make that go away, and you wanna, and you wanna get permission to do what you did. And what you, what you sent us, and what you've given us here, unfortunately, is the wrong form. We need a special permit application, and, and as the attorney said, the reasons for issuing a special permit on this type of building, which, which wasn't a normal-type building, is simply to, okay, you can increase the non-conformity. And, and it's much easier for the zoning board to do it. I don't know whether there's gonna be any problem with it. But we, but we need to advertise correctly. We tried to follow the rules, you know? Ron, I, I know, we're gonna follow the rules in this group.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
For everybody.
Yeah. I'm not asking anything, you know, crazy.
Okay.
It, it, it's just, this, this-
It's confusing.
I was told by the administrator to come here first, and you could appeal his, you could overrule his decision, that it wasn't-
That it wasn't-
Uh, that it was, that what we did was okay.
Not with other buildings, I mean, it's not okay.
Wait, excuse me. Did you ever put in for a building permit?
No.
Then the best thing to do is withdraw everything, put in for a building permit. Do everything right. Put in for a building permit. Then, whatever he wants to do, he can do. Okay? And then he'll come here, and whatever we wanna do, we will do.
Okay, Mike.
Right here in the letter that you got from Mark, it says that you need a special permit. Now, the administrator might've been acting on good intentions, but he's not the building official, and I think he, if he said variance to you, I don't know what he said to you, he was wrong. Mark gave you the, the proper information, and that's what you should've applied for. This is the same letter that he gave you. Says right in it, "Special permit," doesn't say variance.
Excuse me, but the building was there, right, Mike? The building was there. How he added to it, or what you did to it, you did.
That's irrelevant. You can go in circles with that all day long, Louis, then the problem is, is-
I'm done with listening to that, yeah.
Is, the attorney's given us-
Right, but even the attorney said-
His opinion, and in Mark's letter, it says "special permit." In this application, it says "variance." And everything that I've heard in the last 15 or 20 minutes says that we need a special permit. This isn't the first time that we've had the-
Now, why would we need a special permit when he's not doing this?
For a non-conforming use.
Thank you. So, in order to go forward with the first thing that was on the agenda, which was the appeal, um, do you wanna state your case why you think the appeal is wrong? Or do you wanna go forward with that tonight? Or do you wanna do both of them together when you get the special permit done, form done?
Well-
Could I see that?
Yeah.
What are we appealing?
We're appealing, I think, the decision of the building inspector. I'd like to know, I guess-
The May 16, 2019 decision, which states that a building permit would be denied, because in order to issue the building permit, it has to be zoning compliant. In order to be zoning compliant, you need a finding from this board, and there hasn't been one. So that's what this letter says. So in order to overturn this, well-
So we, that's what I'm confused about.
Well, I think you said it right. We're going in a circle.
Correct.
So there's a missing piece of the puzzle, which is a finding by this board.
When we were figuring out what we needed to do, we had a meeting with the administrator, and Mark was there.
Uh-huh.
And they had mentioned, the administrator was talking to Mark, and said, "Well, he can go into ZVA and appeal your decision," but he's like, "Well, if they don't appeal, then we'll ask for a, you know, then you can ask for a variance." He could ask for a variance, and everything was okay, and that's why he came, because I'm new to this, and-
Sure.
And then, so I don't know why they didn't say anything about the special permit when he was right there with us in the room, that we needed that. He was, everything was okay, that this was gonna, it was not a big deal.
Sure, I understand. Mike, do you have something to say?
Was that after this letter?
Before.
This was before you got the le, before you got the letter?
When we talked.
You talked to the administrator, Mark?
And Mark.
And then you got this letter? And the letter told you to apply for a special permit?
That's what it says there, but we didn't talk about that at the time.
No, 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 but-
Sometimes, if you don't have the rulebook in front of you, and you're just talking, you might use a term that doesn't-
I screw them up almost every meeting, so.
Yeah. It, it means you wanna change something, but the, by, legally, how to do that is a special permit. Okay?
Excuse me. How, how big is this lot we're talking about?
It's two and a half acres.
Two and a half acres. And you don't need no, everything is no, no, you know, lot, no lot lines, no nothing. You're away from everything.
Yeah.
Okay. And the building was a certain size, right? How many square feet was the building?
Eighteen hundred, I believe, the gross, what they had on the assessors.
Okay, eighteen hundred. You got, you see, you should have that here. Now, how big did you make it?
Uh, it's less than that, it's about fourteen hundred.
Not going there. We are not, we are not the fact finders.
Well, I'm just confused. Maybe the council can add to that. Can you add something to that? He built something smaller.
The statute makes it irrelevant. If it's an alteration of a non-conforming use or structure, it needs a finding. Whether it's positive, negative, it, it doesn't matter.
How is that area zoned there?
R.A. R.A.
R.A.
In fact, we added that, we added recreational, outdoor recreational, I think, to our zoning for that, if I'm not mistaken. Right, Ron?
So it's, it's- No, I don't think so.
No?
If I may?
Sure, what do you have?
The problem, going way back, all right, when zoning first came in, right, they always called us a campground. It was a place where you went and, and had, had a camp, a fire, or whatever, all right? Then when zoning came in, right, they never included picnic grounds. They always called us the campground. So we never got classified under that. Campgrounds got classified in our district. So, going back, that's where the problem originally arose, right? So, I mean, that's, that's been on the books for years and years and years. So, now, the question is, refreshment stand is in there, all right? Are we gonna be able to, or is Keith gonna be able to operate that refreshment stand?
Well, there's no occupancy on that right now.
Okay.
There's just stop work going around the building.
I'd like to ask you a question.
Sure.
I mean, we're, we're happy to do whatever we need to do to make it right, but because we're seasonal, because we operate for two and a half months out of the year, this is our income, we're in- We're in the height of our season now. We've worked very hard to get all this to happen. We've made it aesthetically more pleasing. It's a beautiful building.
Yeah.
It's been stamped by an engineer. I'd like to know, can we have permission to just use it as a concession stand?
A concession stand inside didn't change at all.
Well, we're, I mean, nothing changed inside the building. Like, can we still serve our customers?
The building inspector says it's a...
You don't have the rights to read that.
My question was gonna be to the attorney.
He would say, "Not a zoning issue," so I mean, it's Mark's decision.
So are you, are you saying you want to, like, punish us for...
I am absolutely not saying that.
If we continue, tonight, if we continue what you're talking about, what are we continuing? We're gonna take a vote?
I don't think we can continue.
Well, you, you could, but I'm not sure it would be fruitful.
No.
Yeah. Can I just put it in one sentence and I apologize, 'cause I don't mean to be insensitive or, or sort of brash about it, but as noticed, you have two applications before you. You've got an appeal, you've got a variance. From what I've heard tonight, it doesn't sound like you're gonna be able to make findings that would support overturning the decision of the building inspector. So that one is gonna very likely get denied. You don't have sufficient grounds under the statute to grant a variance. So if the board goes forward on those, you're gonna be very hard-pressed to grant anything. In fact, it's highly likely that they'll both get denied, and nobody will be better off than when they arrive here. So it sounds like what would be most fruitful is if those were withdrawn and a proper application for a non-conforming use finding were before this board, and if it really, if the facts really turn out that it's smaller, it's, you know, a modest change, in fact, perhaps a less intrusive change, the board might be in a position to very easily make a finding that it's not more detrimental.
Mm-hmm.
And then this moves forward. You get the building permit at that point.
Counsel, what's the shortest period of notification in terms of posting it in the papers?
Two successive weeks.
It's gonna be two weeks?
Yeah, so it's usually maybe a three-week turnaround, realistically, before you can get it before the board again.
There's a few days for, for the paper to post it.
Yeah.
That's the statutory minimum, at least.
That's statutorily required, and then there's the practical side. You have to have a meeting, you have to actually communicate with the people who publish it and get the notice out. So in my experience, it's usually about a three-week turnaround.
Yeah. So I, I, I mean, I'm gonna ask the members that are here now.
Can I have one question before you...
Would anybody be willing to have a meeting before our monthly, regular monthly meeting for these people?
I have a problem with that.
Okay.
But can I have, uh, one question?
Sure.
Your scenario that you described about being denied on the variance and everything else, would they be prohibited from reapplying for two years?
Not if they withdrew.
If they withdrew.
And the board could accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
So they understood what the possibility, it could hurt you if you went forward with the variance and it didn't come out in a positive manner, because now you're restricted to a two-year waiting period.
Could, could it, you, you said what you, that what you see here tonight so far, don't think that we're gonna come out with a decision, but with what, how do we know that with what we've shown you? We haven't shown you what?
Right. So let me separate two things, the procedure and the merits of your case. We haven't really even talked about the merits of your case. I mean, we've, we've heard about it, and I think you've heard, the board's pretty sensitive to that, too. But what I'm talking about is a procedural problem. So in order for the board to act lawfully, they have to follow the lawful procedures. So that has nothing to do with whether or not you've got a good case, a bad case, it has nothing to do with that. In fact, even if every member of this board right now wanted to grant you that relief, I would still be sitting here telling them they couldn't, 'cause it's not properly in front of them. So you might have a unanimous vote in your favor, but the application that they need to act on just isn't in front of them. So, and again, I'm not your counsel, I'm theirs, but if you get that application in, then the board can act. And if they're willing, which I think I heard an indication, they might be willing to schedule a special meeting in order to make that happen as expeditiously as possible, that gets you to the finish line faster than anything else.
I mean, we know that you're counting on this income. I, I think that this group would definitely, you know, need food.
I mean, it's all, the camps we have scheduled, the hundreds of boys' and girls' camps, all these kids that don't have food to eat when they come, they don't mind that.
I'm really sorry.
What they're saying now, you tell me if I'm right or wrong. They withdraw from tonight, they're gonna be back here, and you're not closed down, even though he gave you assistance here and that there. You're really not closed down because of the fact that it was withdrawn, okay?
What, Louis?
If he withdraws, he withdraws. Now, he can write anything he wants to write, and he can say anything he wants to say.
Okay, I think I've heard enough.
Okay.
Could you pass that down, please, to the lady? So I certainly wouldn't want any recommendation from any member of this committee to, to, to proponents, to, to do something that's not legal.
That's right.
Okay.
We would never do that.
Yeah, I know. It's not in anybody's mind. So what do you think? Wanna come in and try it again tomorrow? Would you like to withdraw your application? And we'll take it without prejudice and then, uh...
I don't think we can make another meeting.
I'm sorry?
I don't know if you could make an earlier meeting.
Okay.
Before the tenth, because we need that three-week time.
Three weeks.
Well, we don't have three weeks, for sure.
Well, the, the, you know, unfortunately, it is what it is. You can't, we're trying to, we're saying that, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll come in early if, if we can get this, can we get it? I mean, can we get that application advertised tomorrow, or you?
He has to come in first.
Oh, yeah, he has to come in, yeah.
Submit the application.
I think the first, let's go, let's do one step first. I think you need to withdraw, but it's, it's up to you. You're the, you're the proponent, so you need to...
And the soonest we could see them would be on the third.
Okay. But anything's better than, anything's better than one more week.
Can I have a moment?
You may.
I agree he's on vacation.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm gonna be, I forgot.
The straw in your pencil.
I wouldn't do that, you know.
Possibility, not appropriate for this.
Attorney winner will help you.
Thank you.
I, I, I've offered...
Do you, do you know Bill? Do I know Bill? We've met.
He's denying.
I was being polite the first time I answered.
Okay. We're back, we're back listening to our proponents.
Yeah, we'll withdraw.
Okay. You'd like to have, you're asking to withdraw the whole thing?
Make a motion to accept his withdrawal.
Okay, motion for me to second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And that's, that's, that's been withdrawn, drawn without prejudice, so that we can, they can do whatever. Okay. So you got your pictures. We may not even need those pictures next time. You never know.
Well, that'll be dependent on the application. You gotta post it by...
Well, yeah, but it's only forty-eight hours, so I think, I think we'll, we'll hold. Can everybody please put, put it on their calendar, though? Tentatively, another meeting on the third, so we can get this...
So you're gonna ask... So just so they know, the sooner the application comes in, the sooner we can have a special meeting.
Is anybody available during the day, the day before the fourth of July? That's what that day is.
I am. You want me to run the meeting, too?
I am. No, yes, Louis.
I'll run the meeting.
Sure. We'll have to run that by DM.
Nobody will have to come in.
Nobody have to come in. I'll go all the way.
I will not be here.
Okay, so everybody's thinking about it.
And it's supermajority, too.
Is it a supermajority?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we're all super. We don't even have a fifth member anymore.
I don't understand.
Right?
Well, that makes it unanimous vote.
What do you mean?
That's right. I mean, so we can do three out of, not three out of four.
So an absence doesn't change the membership of the board?
No.
So you still, you're a five-member board.
Five-member.
It's a five-member board, so you need four votes.
We have six people.
An alternate.
Louis is an alternate.
I'll vote all, I'll vote the whole four times.
Right.
I got no problem.
Yeah, John and Jan.
It makes such a big thing out of everything. Stan's been there a hundred years. He built it smaller.
All right, I'm gonna get notified of time, and, and we'll, we'll, we'll let you know when, whether we're gonna be able to have another meeting. If, if we can get this all done before the third, then we'll do it for the third. Okay? Really sorry we couldn't help you guys anymore. I'm sorry that you were, you were given some, I think, bad information, which is unfortunate. Just kind of off.
May I say one more thing?
Sure, you may, as long as it's nice.
What's very sad here, all right?